Because we're up to the body, do you have a couple of formalities that we didn't satisfy on the agenda? So our most senior member, our most senior member of council can clear us through our portion of the agenda.
We've got to call our members.
Well, there's that. Sure.
Okay. Well, call the meeting order and the first item is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's four. May I have a second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have approved the agenda. Now it's time for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have open for citizens comments, if there are any citizens who want to discuss any items that are not on the agenda.
Will there be some comments afterwards as well?
No. You'll be able to comment on during the discussion of this if you'd like, but afterwards we will just adjourn.
Okay. So I guess if there's not going to be a moment after, then I guess my two comments, just from having quickly read it last night, is so the survey is included as additional document, but there was also opportunity for people to write comments. I didn't see that included in the documentation. Is that available? Will that be included in your final draft?
We can, yeah. We've taken, like, we have a list of all comments from the survey and compiled additional comments from the open house into the survey monkey. So there should be in the survey document, a bunch of open-ended responses. And anything that was given at the open house that was written, was input into that.
Okay.
So those should all be a part of that document.
At the moment, it's not. It's just the survey questions.
It's just because we take everything from the open house and put it into survey monkey, so it's compiled in one place. So even though it's an online survey, we put all of the workshop responses in it so that we can digest it as like one piece. So all the comments from the open house should be in there.
Okay. The other thing is, previously I think I had seen three sites that were looked at, and currently it looks like there's two sites.
For, for what? What type, what type of sites?
Uh, like the future development sites. So like apartment building, this or that. So there were, there were three, now there's two. Is the third being edited out, or will that appear later?
I don't remember ever doing three. I think we only presented two at the open house. So I'm not sure, because there was the One End Royal and there was the Hartfield Lanes one.
Right.
I don't.
That thing was third.
No, we edited the Royal Avenue one, so it might look a little bit different, because based on the open house, we changed the look of it a little bit. But that was, so it might look different, but there was only those two sites that we did kind of like visualizations of.
Okay.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Now we can move forward.
Sounds good.
Do you have any further comments, or just want us to dive right in?
Yeah, just jump right in. These are consultants. It's Rachel Smith and Nick Kellergiesis. And they're the leads on the project. Our other sub consultants aren't here, but they've been, they're in the process throughout. They've done a lot of the public input sessions and things like that, so now we're just, you already kind of reviewed?
Sure.
This document ultimately has become.
Sure. And that, well, we've gone until 10:00. The first hour is going to be the planning permission presentation, and then it's just going to be.
The council.
With their council. Yeah, the council presentation. I'm sorry, not planning permission. And then we're going to have the DDA, just the DDA board kind of workshop.
Well, thank you for being here today. I know it's really Saturday, it's a big fuss, but so we appreciate your time with us today. I'm Nick Kellergiesis, this is Rachel Smith. And our two other sub consultants are the Cool Group, the Community Land Use and Economics Group. They're based out of Philadelphia. They help us sort of the business development market positioning downtown. The other firm, Sam Schwartz, they are based, they have an office in Chicago with their Board of directors. They were a transportation, landing, parking firm. So we had a good team for this firm. So we just wanted to kind of give you the highlights of the plan and to answer your questions as we go forward. We did have a very good, I could say offhand, I think we did have a pretty good public engagement process in this plan. We had two community workshops and we had probably 150, 200 attendees for both sessions. We had very good input in the community survey that we had as part of this process. We also did a round of stakeholder interviews back in last October. I think it was last October. We did three days of stakeholder interviews and we had a chance to talk to several during that process. So we think we got pretty good public participation in this process. So just to, just to dive in, really kind of the plan, you know, there's really kind of two basic parts to the plan. One is there's a basic introduction. It talks about the opportunities and challenges downtown. And then the second part is actually the master plan and it involves four goals primarily. So we also have an implementation section in the plan as well. So the discussion of the opportunities and challenges, I think some of them you probably already know. Let's see, ooh, yeah. Yeah? Yes. So, yeah, I don't know why it's now. Yeah, there we go. All right, all right. So just the first part of setting the stage, really we're kind of looking at two different things. One is, you know, just an overview of past planning efforts. There's been a lot of planning, a lot of activities. It's been pretty busy around the last couple of years and a lot of things happened. You have an operating main shoot program within the DDA that was recently accredited by the National Main Shoot Center, which is really great. You've adopted a complete shoots ordinance. The DDA has its own strategic plan. Wayfinding site is just going to be installed. You have a set of design guidelines that you've adopted. Those are a lot of things to get done in a couple of years, and so it's moved pretty quickly. And that's, I think, a good credit to all of you, because it takes a lot of years for some communities to get that far. So I think you've gone light years ahead of where other communities are. You know, I think the basic, you know, kind of key issues and things that were heard from the communities. One, obviously more businesses, more diversity of businesses is great. You know, you already have core restaurants, service businesses, those are your strengths. But how do we get more of those, you know? And then the second thing is how to make downtown more pedestrian friendly. You've heard that a hundred times. How to make it a more pleasing environment for people who want to walk. And also aggregate to have some type of spaces for people who want to gather and to be a part of the community. So that's really key. So, you know, those are some of the key issues. Some of the other issues we heard during the process, we heard from developers and investors, is trying to make your zoning more simple, more straightforward. So we do talk about zoning in the plan a little bit. So I think, you know, so those are some of the key things. And then, you know, looking at opportunities to introduce some development where it could occur in the downtown is key. The downtown design guidelines are already covered here, some potential, not so much sites. There are some sites that were looked at, but model development blocks where that could happen. Our downtown plan kind of expands on that. We'll talk about that in a moment. So I already talked about the community engagement process, and so we did kind of the traditional, you know, the workshops face-to-face. And then we did the electronic stuff, which we had a very, very good response to.
Yeah, you know, this presentation really just follows the master plans as you're going through, we go through. As Nick said, we talked to stakeholders and there's kind of a summary of the main things that came out of the stakeholder interviews, a lot of which was the desire to have a place to gather in downtown Berkeley, as well as traffic and parking issues, storefront improvement issues, communication between the DDA and the city to residents and business owners came up, as well as the downtown regulatory environment that is sometimes burdensome to business owners, is what we heard. So that kind of, those are, go through on page 18 and 19, and then goes into the results from the open houses. So there's a lot of information from the first open house up here in the plan of what we heard and what we really think the plan documents off of, of what we heard in this first open house, including the big exercise of where people wanted to see public space opportunities or development opportunities, and, you know, where there was issues, where there was crossing issues, et cetera. So, you know, goes, that all goes through in this first section, as well as kind of like what community members need for the opportunities and challenges are. A lot of the feedback we got from the open house is more incorporated into the planned document. So when you see the concept rendering, it'll say something like, you know, 75% of community members like this design. So this first section kind of gives an overview of both the open houses in terms of how many people came. We had between the both open houses and the field offices, about 150 kind of in-person participation, and then over 300 online between the first one and the second one, first survey and the second survey. So there might be some overlap in that, but in terms of responses, it was over 300.
All right. The goal, the plan has four basic goals to it, and we'll go through those here in a moment. So the first goal is to diversify the overall land use mix in the downtown. And so that's really typically a goal of a lot of downtown lands, is trying to produce different uses, more different uses. Obviously, a lot more retail, a lot more commercial. But downtown stay, as I'm sure you're aware, introducing residential, we are introducing more entertainment uses. So those are really key. And so one of the goals is trying to diversify that land use space. And again, it's kind of building off of what the design guidelines have talked about, is about introducing some new development where we could have some mixed uses, whether it's residential, I mean, commercial on the first floor, then residential on the upper floors. You have some that are already occurring in your downtown, so are there opportunities to do that elsewhere? As I've said, we kind of build on the downtown master plan. We have identified a couple of other sites where that could potentially happen. It doesn't mean it will happen, but it could potentially happen. And so those are areas where you want to take a look at. So the key objective of some of those goals is encouraging some infill development where it could occur. Obviously, reusing existing buildings and preserving existing buildings is really important, so that's the key thing. The other thing, just to back up a little bit, we also follow the design guidelines in terms of character. The design guidelines identify actually three character areas in your downtown. One is the Gateway West, and then there's a central downtown core that's kind of around the old theater. And then there's a Gateway South area. And so we follow the design guidelines and what they kind of recommend as character areas. And so we've identified three land use zones. So the Gateway West area, the downtown core, traditional core, and then the Gateway South between the top of Drive and 11 Mile Road. So those are three character areas that we do have some specific recommendations on how those should develop. We, for the Gateway West area, we recommend infill development, reuse in that area. For the downtown core, we recommend just really kind of solidifying that as your real retail core. We have a strong base of retail already, so let's concentrate as much retail as we can along that way. And then at Gateway South, is there, there are areas we feel that there are some, there are some opportunity sites, and we identified that in the master plan. Those are probably sites where, you know, it could occur to community use development. Then again, it's long-term, you know, it's probably, it's not going to happen overnight. I think these are sites that could develop over the long term. There are a couple of sites that the design guidelines document already identified. So anyway, just to move on from the land use section. The second goal was just to continue to address the social character of downtown Berkeley, continue to invest in some street skate improvements, promoting, you know, continue to promote storefront building improvements. We have a facade ramp program in place. We recommend that the Enact Like Program to encourage property improvements, signage storefronts, you know, just general facade improvements are really important. So there's a real key emphasis on that. We also want to sort of, you know, integrate some green wherever possible in the downtown, and develop a public gathering space. So we have a couple of concept schemes in the master plan that, you know, could be potential gathering spots if we put some investment in, street furniture, public guards of color in the street scape. So those are, you know, real key objectives. So we have several different schemes. And again, this is not something that's going to happen overnight, you know, probably one of the critical things to be done, access to develop sort of a street skate master plan for, you know, carrying this out, and then phasing probably implementation for several years. So it's something to work at. I think the gathering space idea, you know, is something that maybe you want to take down right away, because it is something that the community identifies as something important to have, that type of gathering space.
Yeah, and so throughout the plan, you know, we looked at, I want to say, four or five different concepts for public gathering spaces. And, you know, people generally, like all of them, there was, I think, a lot of excitement about the space between parks and embellows, which I know has, you know, could be buy-in from the business owners and purchasing of that land, as well as the area, the street, north of the street closure, which might offer a little bit more flexibility in terms of the city. So, you know, we included, once we get to implementations, some, you know, next steps that might be taken to move some of these ideas forward. But those were things that most of the community was really excited about, and in the comments, you know, very pleased to see something like this happening and wanting to move it forward.
I think one thing to just add on the street skate and public space improvements is that there is a little bit, and I'm sure you're aware, is a little bit of a mid-century aesthetic to the downtown. It's, you know, post-World War II. It's got kind of, you know, it's got its 1960s, 50s look to it, which is pretty unique. And I think that's something you'd want to play up a little bit, maybe in your street skate improvements, or another facade of building improvements. So we picked up on a little bit of that. We do have sort of a shelter, you know, public space scheme for Bina Street, I believe. And it does have kind of a mid-century aesthetic to it, and we're trying to pick up on that, that part a little bit. Not to say that we're all going to be bad men, you know, have that type of furniture everywhere, but, you know, just a little bit of that aesthetic, you know, could make downtown Berkeley stand out a little bit.
And I think something we heard on that, along those lines, was like, you know, we don't want it to be kitschy. It should feel authentic, you know, if it doesn't, shouldn't be over the top mid-century where then it feels really outdated. But it's true to this place, and so trying to capitalize on this, the authenticity of why that feels appropriate, and make it modern and not feel like it's going to be outdated because it was trendy.
Goal three, and what's a downtown plan without parking, right? Got to have, got to have a parking section. So as part of our scope, we developed a parking, a parking plan. We also did parking counts in the downtown as part of the study. But we have like four key kind of, you know, objectives on the transportation, parking. One is to continue to implement traffic calming if we can. We've already done quite a lot with the road diet, so that, you know, that's a big accomplishment. And I'm sure you're going to be monitoring that as you go forward, how that's going to work, how that will continue to work and perform for the downtown. But there are other opportunities to do traffic calming, just to make it more production friendly in your downtown. Trying to improve the bicycle network, and we talk about micro-mobility options. This is something that, you know, City of Chicago is now experiencing. We're from Chicago, we're now experimenting with scooters. That's micro-mobility is how those types of forms of transportation in downtown. It's something to look at down the road. It doesn't mean you have to do it, but it's something to look at if you feel like people would want those different types of transportation. But at least improving the bicycle network is really important, if you want to encourage, you know, more cyclists, well, you know, more cyclists to come to downtown using their bikes. So enhancing the transit service in the downtown, some connecting modes of transportation, and implementing wayfinding signage improvements to the parking lots, associated with public parking lots. We heard that that was a, you know, pretty big priority is to, you know, try to get that signage installed, so that's important.
That was something that came up, just, you know, in the results of the parking study. You can see that like the highest use, the lots that have the highest use are the ones that are the municipal parking lots. But there's parking all around the downtown, and it's just those are the ones that people know about that they can park at. So better signage, I think the idea is better signage will help everyone know that there is plenty of parking, and it just might not be the place that you always go to and always think of. So the parking management strategies are built on parking counts, and there's information about the counts. They, Sam Schwartz did counts at three different dates, and they all ended up with the same information. So the June count was equally as full as the February count, so they're pretty sure that this is accurate, because it didn't really change very much. And it was still, you know, there's, as it shows in Sam Schwartz's app, there was a map. On page 83. So there are a few lots that are, you know, 85 to 100%. Like 85% is what Sam Schwartz says, that's the ideal percentage. You don't want to be, like, you don't want to be lower than that, and you don't really want to be that much higher than that. So there's only a few lots that reach that, and the majority of the system is not filled. About 31% of spaces were filled. So the parking recommendations are to build up these parking counts that have happened a few different times.
So ideally, you know, the long-term strategy is trying to encourage people to park in other places in the downtown, and try to encourage them to walk to downtown. So that's kind of the long-term strategy, to be able to even out the usage of the parking spaces in the downtown. So, well, it happened. It's a, it's a goal, you know, because people like to park in front of the stores they're going to visit, so, or they're going to buy the stores they're going to visit. So it's always a challenge, but I think, you know, having a combination of good signage, wayfinding, making sure people know where the parking is located, that they'll find those spaces, especially in days where you're going to have high utilization like today. People are going to come down to them, so. So anyway, yeah, so some of the other parking regulations we have is to, just to go back and look at, update the parking regulations. One thing that Sam Schwartz noted is that there are parking requirements for several different land uses. Many different land uses. I forget what the number was that they listed. Typically now, communities are really kind of collapsing that, and it's mainly towards, okay, if you have a commercial use or just an office use or entertainment use, the parking regulations are not tied to several different types of retail businesses. So it's mainly more general, and generally also to lower the parking requirements a little bit. So I know that's, in a lot of communities, that seems like a scary thing to lower parking requirements, but it's not. The two things about lowering the parking requirements is, first of all, it's not going to discourage development. It's actually going to have the opposite effect. It's actually encouraged more businesses to want to come in the downtown, because they will have to supply all the parking if they remain in another location. So that's something to look at, is obviously making that everybody's parking regulations.
Question for you.
Yeah.
I noticed on, what is that, 149 on the street spaces. Is that before or after the road diet? Before that, we had a bunch of spaces, not fully. I'm on page 81. Does that include all of the new spots that we added?
That's a good question.
Does it not? That should be, that bumps up probably about 34.
49.
We're going to look, put it right up to 100 then, basically.
Yeah, we'll look into that. I'm not sure. I think that the initial inventory was done before the road diet, but I know after the road diet went into effect, we did update a lot, so I'll check with Sam Schwartz to see if he updated that.
Okay, thank you.
Have you guys seen examples where instead of a specific use type, or like even this commercial or industrial, whatever it is, having its own, or calculation, if you just see like a specific geographical district have its own parking standard?
Yes.
Like if we know that we're flush in Zone 2A, instead of having a type of a use, you say just in Zone 2A, you need, you know, a certain amount of space, something like that, only because we have an abundance of public provided parking, right?
Right, yes. We have some, yeah, you can type parking regulations to zones. It often gets tied to the zoning, obviously. So if you're going to zone a specific area like Gateway South.
Sure.
Yeah. Couple of other recommend or objectives we have is, this is something to think about. We've seen other communities implement this, is having a shared parking district. And, and so what it is, a shared parking district, is that everybody, everybody of a property pays into a parking fund, and a newer parking, and that money is used to either purchase, you know, you know, land for new parking or to improve parking lots. I believe Rochester has this model in place, so it's either a parking newer fund or a shared district is what it's called. So everybody pays into a fund to help pay for parking improvements. So, you know, if there's a need to add parking in certain locations down the road, this is something that can definitely work. And then last is to improve the curbside, curbside environment, you know, just, you know, just urban design improvement, sidewalk improvements, to make it more comfortable for people to want to, you know, come to downtown. So, have you seen anything else?
Yeah, so improving the on-street environment is really just like improving the on-street parking and making people feel more comfortable, for instance, parking on 12 Mile, where right now the traffic speeds mean a lot of people don't want to use the street parking. So if, you know, there's ways to change the parking, the curbside parking environment, then you'll have higher utilization, you know, throughout the district, except everyone is parking in the back, because that's where it feels the safest. And I think, you know, the parking district was something that community members in the survey really responded to, that it's so frustrating to be able to, I'm right here, but I can't park here, and I'm going right there because it's only for the store. And so that was something that, you know, it's the best practice that Sam Schwartz recommends and, you know, is excited about, but it's also something that the community members asked for, that it's frustrating to be somewhere right where I need to be, and there's plenty of open spots, but it's one business that's not busy right now, but I need to go next door and I can't park. So it's.
Somebody's business is closed.
Yes.
And you can't use the parking.
So the main challenge for this one is, you know, setting up a merchant parking committee to be able to have all the businesses onboard, because you need to be able to have a business onboard for it to work. And there's a little bit more information in the implementation section about how, you know, you can get that set up, because that's the main buy-in you need is for business owners to be willing to give up their little, few parking spots for the greater good. And a lot of that is communicating that this should help everyone.
The parking district assumes the maintenance, right? But doesn't that be a pretty big hook to the business owners, just to say like, this couple bucks a year, you hope to be surface, anything like that?
Who manages that process?
That might be some sort of public body. Just to move on, so the last, the last goal really focuses on the business development in the downtown. And so we have, we have several different recommendations, and I think, again, we're kind of trying to build on some trends that are happening. Certainly, if you look in the report from the retail trade, there's a lot of potential. You have a lot of strengths, particularly in your restaurants and food services. And you have a significant cluster of healthcare and, and healthcare. So those are pretty significant. I think one of the things we wanted to kind of concentrate on is some trends. And these are kind of focused in some of your specific areas. One is to focus on cool comfort dining, because that's a trend that we see out there. Obviously, there's people who want to have a nice spot, a nice atmosphere, but they don't want to spend a heck of a lot of money, but they want to be in a nice atmosphere. It could be like Panera, you know, up a little bit more. but they want to be in a nice atmosphere, it could be like Panera, you know, up a little bit more. Now, I don't know if that's directly explained in the book.
Yeah, it's a trend, but it also, it fits the demographics and the business, like, characteristics of the people in Berkeley, so it's.
Casey's point is Berkeley, come on.
Yeah, exactly, you know, it's kid-friendly, but it's not like, there's not like a playpen in the back. So you can bring your family, but.
Why consider that?
If some extra space.
Daycare.
Your right thoughts. So, yeah, family-friendly, inviting, moderately priced, kind of casual. It suits the character of Berkeley and also the demand that's here.
So a couple of things that our plan recommends to try to encourage more that to happen, one is, is, you know, building some promotions around that, like a Taste of Berkeley that can help promote the different types of restaurants that you have. One thing to think about is maybe having a streamlined permitting process for restaurants, to make it a little bit easier. You know, if there's a way you can streamline the permitting process and reduce permit fees, or some way to incentivize more restaurants to come into your downtown. Those are just some of the things to take a look at. And then, and also, the DDA could also potentially provide consultations to restaurants on how to sort of reposition themselves a little bit to kind of capture that trend and that market, so. So we see, you know, restaurants being a core, a core element of your traditional downtown boards I talked about, sort of around the Berkeley Theater, or those blocks, but it could be other places in the downtown as well. So we do think there's opportunities for more restaurants. The second thing is focusing on artisanal retail, and what we mean by that is that small, focused retail that's a little bit alike manufacturing with that as well. And so we kind of could, you know, the gateway west area or the gateway south area, it could be locations for that type of retail where there's just a little bit of manufacturing that goes, and you're getting custom-made stuff. Or it can be pottery, it can be those things that are made on site that you make. And so we think that that could be a potential for Berkeley, maybe because you do have that type of space in those areas to make that happen.
So you do have that type of retail already, so it's building on what's already here, it's like the quirky, eclectic, vintage vibe, and you have those shops, and so it's really making sure that the shops that are here know that they're part of this category and can capitalize on that as their promotion, and attracting more because you already have some of that. So you can have this district of, you know, like, interesting retail that is really unique to Berkeley, which is what already makes Berkeley unique, is the, all of the small businesses and small retail.
So the other thing is focusing on experience and entertainment. I'm sure you've probably heard about, you know, experience, retail, and entertainment. And again, you do have, you know, some, you do have restaurants, bars, and so kind of building a little bit off of that to have a little bit more entertainment uses, sort of, you know, things like, it needs to be a little bit out there, but, but there are things like maybe sort of reinvigorating the Hartsfield Lane bowling alley a little bit, you know, whether it's, you know, doing some facade improvements or doing some marketing advertising, because it is sort of an entertainment destination, maybe we can make that a real strong anchor in the downtown. We do talk, and I think, to be honest, this might have been more, more, one of the more provocative questions we posed to the community is what to do with the old Berkeley Theater? And we only brought that up, and I know there are people out there saying, well, who's going to get that going? Who's going to do that? You know, who's going to bring that theater alive? Well, we only brought it up because really, you know, vibrant downtowns have a theater and, or some type of cultural arts center, or some type of, you know, center for community gathering, and a theater could be that way to do it. Do we have an easy answer for you on how to bring that theater back? We don't, but we do have some suggestions for that. But we have, we do have case studies in the plan that show how under communities have brought theaters back and how that can be done. So it's, it's something to think about. It may not be ever a full-time theater again, but it could be maybe a combination space of theater, you know, cultural arts center or a like, or a conference center, or, so we've seen communities do it different ways. Farmington, the Civic Theater in Farmington is a project that the city undertook, and it's now a combined conference, cultural center, movie theater, that's become an anchor in your downtown. So it's, it's something to think about. We're not telling you to do it tomorrow, but it's something to think about.
I think the idea with this strategy is also the way it can work with the eclectic, regional retail as well, that you could have that kind of classroom setting retail, or you could have, like, knitting classes, or, you know. Got that already. More just like places that you can go and do something instead of just buy something gets, gets you go out. So trying to have more businesses that do that.
And I know we're getting a little tight downtown, just to wrap up a couple of other things. We do have an objective there about really looking at expanding the toolbox when it comes to incentives. It's just like you have a facade grant program, and it might be good to look at at some point some incentive to try to encourage businesses, even if it's a very simple incentive, like, for, like, you know, a streamlined permitting process or, or, you know, you know, reduction of building permit fees. We do suggest in here about a business renovation program that can use for startup businesses that home issue it has. But it could be something as simple as doing an image campaign or, you know, a marketing campaign about just, you know, where are the opportunities to come to Berkeley using the type of business that you like? If you're doing an image campaign, it would be just, just as effective. Okay, so, just implementation, we're not going to go into all the details on it, but we do have an implementation section. We do talk about, we do have a zoning strategy. We do recommend, the plan is simplified zoning for Pooch and Eleven Mile. I believe there's six or seven different zoning districts in downtown. We recommend that going down to three, three districts to sort of correspond again to those character areas that we talked about while we were there. There's, we looked at your zoning in each of the districts, there's not a heck of a lot of difference between the districts. It's not too much, just a little bit. So we think that, you know, you know, consolidating them is worth looking at.
Are you talking pieces allowed between the districts, not being other, the similar?
Yeah, yeah, there's not, there's not too much difference.
Probably with the height limits, like some of the setbacks, there's a lot of similarities.
Yeah, there's not too much other difference. And again, you may want to retool those zoning to correspond to those character areas that you'd like to see happen. We did get into urban design a little bit more, and we talked about level of service recommendations under the Transportation Act. We talked a little bit more about the parking district and how to calibrate the parking maximums that are in your zoning code. And then we also have in there some, a thought about managing formula businesses. And the formula of businesses, another word for chain store. And we did ask questions to the community about how they felt about chain stores versus small businesses and trying to encourage more small businesses to come into downtown rather than chains. And so actually, you know, a lot of communities where we ask that question, they're not for it, but here at Berkeley, I think we got pretty overwhelming response that this is something to look at. You know, to have some type of regulatory tool to sort of manage how many chain stores come into your downtown. And how you define chain stores is up to you. It can, you know, a chain store can be, you know, writing, or it can be basketball games or something like that, a smaller school, or it can be a regional chain versus a national chain. And so I think that, you know, there was, there's concern about, you know, if Berkeley, downtown Berkeley really grows in the future, are we going to see displacement and losses in those small businesses in the rest of the world? So that's long-term, I mean, we're not saying that now, downtown, but it's something to think about down, down, down the line if you want to implement something like that. So, and then we have an implementation matrix in the plan. It just describes the initiative, who is potentially responsible for the, for the project. And then the next, while we're doing the next steps as we speak, so today we're meeting with the DDA board. We're going to be meeting with them on updating their internal strategic plan in the, in the thought that they're going to integrate some of these planning initiatives as part of your strategic plan. We are doing interactive open house, so we hope, hope we're all going to be there. And then, then looking at Plan Commission and the City Council, so, that's it.
Open it up for questions?
The retro cool, trying to utilize retro cool trend, is there a shelf life on something like that? How long can we sort of sit in that area before, like, retro moves on and we're just old? I mean, that's next in series.
No, that's a good question. I mean, I think that any sort of, like, retro business that opens, like, it's got to be also modernly appealing. And so I think that if it's rooted in history and it's done well, then it doesn't feel so dated. I think that there's definitely way, ways that it can be done that would be really dated, but I think as long as it has, I mean, modern amenities and speaks to modern tastes with just a retro kind of aesthetic, I think it's not going to be, you know, transchea-
I think we're not trying to attract retro businesses, that's, so let, it's, it's the fact that we're a mid-century corridor district that's retro.
It was more of a aesthetic, like, retro, huh?
Yeah, so we're not trying to attract retro businesses. We want the cool, eclectic, and artisanal.
Yeah.
But what we want to make sure is everybody, as we continue to push the fact that we're not a historic downtown, we're a mid-century corridor district, and that's the retro cool part. When you drive down and you look at our buildings, you know, we're, we're kind of this mid-century, you know, common sense, this is who we are, with a few exceptions, but that's the whole idea.
Yeah, I was, I was only going to say, I think, when we think about branding and imaging for downtown, and I always struggle, personally struggle with how does that translate into the public role, streetscape? I was kind of advised, you know, is not to go too far into it because, you know, even streetscape design change, takes change over time, you know, I think you always want to picture your, your streetscape kind of has cues to that, but it's still functional and works for you, and it's going to be, I would, you know, time-lasting for a few days, so. You know, yeah, basically saying, no, go too hog into it, but make sure you, you know, tag into it, that's.
Yeah, reference it.
Yeah.
I just, I have a comment about that one. I was on the wayfinding subcommittee on the DDA, one of the things that, when we were looking at signage and, and how to identify parking in this district and how to get to here or there, one of the things that I, I think we paid particular attention to was the, the aesthetic of the signage that we were choosing, kind of giving a nod to the mid-century yet in an updated current sort of feel. So it's, it's acknowledging the roots of the community and where we come from and, and the aesthetic that's here while being current with that, which is kind of a tricky design thing. And I'm, I'm not a designer, but we've worked with really good people, and I think that, I mean, that was definitely taken into account, you know, looking at embracing that heritage part of our city yet in the present day, so.
Right.
You know, yeah.
I think historical trends will always come back. Like, I think doing something that feels super modern today is more likely to feel really outdated.
Correct.
In five, ten years than if it's something that has a historical reference, because, you know, things that are designed in the fifteen, sixties, like, they, they'll always have a cultural kind of connection.
Okay. I guess this is a complex, my concern, my only major concern right now is the timing and that this plan is so far ahead of the city's master plan and how we're going to integrate and resolve any potential conflicts between the two. As, you know, we started before, I know this goes with the Planning Commission and the City Council for approval, but, you know, we haven't even really started, you know, haven't even selected a consultant for the, for the city's part of the master plan. So I'm not sure how we're going to resolve any of those conflicts that come to work about.
So what's your perspective visually?
Parking, I can see that, you know, there's the, you know, this is geared towards what works for the DDA district, and I can see, when you broaden it and see what, now, how does, how does this affect and still operate to the residential? I think it changes the conversation a little bit, and so that's one specific place I could make out that, you know, might have some conflicts that we need to work out.
So one of the nice things that I think about having this is, it gives us the opportunity with the larger master plan to focus more of our money on the rest of the city. I mean, this piece is already done, more or less, but you're right, they're going to have to marry together. And that's why, I think, Matt, your idea about having the parking by district was really intriguing because the downtown parking is going to have to be different than all of the other areas in the city. It's a different animal, right? So I can appreciate that making sure that the two go together is going to be key, depending on that consultant that we select for the larger master plan, but it's nice to have this piece done.
Oh, absolutely, and there's, yeah, I'm not diminishing this accomplishment at all.
Yeah.
And that, and that it does, yeah, take work off of the Planning Commission from looking at.
Is need to be appropriately integrated?
Yes.
Agreed.
The, the, people did identify, they had concerns about parking in the residential areas, yeah, so I, that, that did come along, so. Hopefully that, that we're going to address in the master plan. And if we can get people to stop only eating up some parking, then maybe we can actually get people, I'm serious. If we get that shared mentality, maybe there's no need for people to try to locate on-street parking past, you know, residential borders.
Wait, in my sense, I'm, you know, parking concerns, I, I want to read more about parking districts, but it sounds really promising, that, that sounds like a really promising solution to a lot of our problems.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it'll be a challenge, but when you, a consultant is selected, you know, they, it was in the RFP that there's already a downtown master plan happening. So there should be a good understanding that there, you know, you're not rewriting the downtown section, that this hopefully can just be, kind of, become part of the, of your comments.
Anybody in the audience that has questions?
Yes, I guess my interpretation is that this was a master plan draft. So when we talk about parking strategies, I think what was explained today was done very succinctly about creating this district, and I think it was done well. I think the issue or a challenge ahead is getting the city, uh, city residents to come on board with that. A, I think, there isn't, there, there also needs to be intermediate steps and strategies. That, that's a real long-ranging thing, I mean, that could take five to ten years. Well, if you want businesses now, like, we already experienced challenges with overflow parking because certain restaurants are, you know, just are underserved with their own parking. So I, the, the other aspect is, I don't think a lot of people are going to read a hundred fifty-page document and understand. So I think, while it's reached out to a hundred fifty people, two hundred people in a survey, in a city of fifteen thousand, I think this is a lot of good work, but getting public citizen acceptance is going to be a challenge. And to say we're done, I think, is just short-sighted. I think it needs to be more interactive and more piecemeal to get it to them.
Thank you.
I think the, I mean, for instance, the parking district was something that was discussed at the second open house. So I totally understand that, you know, the people who come to open houses and take the surveys, you know, that doesn't capture the entire population. But, you know, these aren't new ideas that we're just presenting now. These are ideas that we've already gotten feedback on and that we've gotten really good feedback on. So that's, our hope is that people, you know, either through the grapevine, these ideas have been out there for a while. So, you know, even though this is a draft master plan, we're still taking comments. These aren't things that haven't been vetted before.
And I think she speaks to a common issue we have almost, most of the things that we do, is truly taking this into, and putting what we want to accomplish in the contest. But there is truly a problem, there is, there's a solution on hand, we'd like to move forward on that solution.
move forward on that solution. And a lot of times we do have to sort of cut it up into bite-sized pieces, but having an overarching strategy is, I mean, just sets us so far forward to say like this is the speeds into the larger plan, it speeds into a larger context on, on what the total we're trying to accomplish. But yeah, as we go through the implementation process, that will be, always, that's always our challenge is to try to set whatever we're working on at that moment or during the over course of that year into the larger framework. What's on your mind for this?
Yeah. I just have a comment. I glanced at, I attended a, well, for both actually. The second one, I think, input session, I think I was looking at the potential or the opportunities for Rovina and having that flexible sort of space. I really like that. My business is very on Rovina. And I think that we do at times activate that space. In fact, this Thursday, we have Rovina Rhapsody's coming back, these little street concerts. And so they, the street's blocked, it's a great community event, the Berkeley Junior Women's Club that's been on, it's also happening right there the same night as the Couples Night Out. So a lot of really great things are happening in the city. And I do like what I'm seeing here because I think it's, it's not permanent. I think it, it embraces the space, but it could also be fluid in a sense, we don't live in a temperate climate. So to think that, you know, in the middle of January, we have to block the street up, well, what are we doing in the middle of January? But I think having, you know, opportunities for all kinds of things there, it's a great thing. It's a, it's a creative use of our space, it's a creative use of our resources. And I think it's, it's something desirable and it's something for the community and I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing. So thank you. And, and I thank the residents too for coming out and participating in these input sessions. It's where you do have a voice. And it's because of the input of, of whoever, you know, came that we have a lot of the great ideas. And I know that there's more interactive input session today as well. So I'm really encouraged by what I'm seeing, so thank you.
Any other comments? Special city council?
Salute.
Support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm just contradicting.